Larry, or Victor, or Victor. We'd like to welcome everybody this evening. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Minister Cook, we would like to call this meeting to order at 6:31. Can you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Dr. Gase.
Here.
Mr. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Kizbeth.
Here.
Dr. McBride.
Here. Bring us to the third item, which is adopt agenda. Mr. Cook, do we have any additions, corrections, addenda, corrections, addendums? I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
So moved.
I'll second it then.
Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Brings us to item four, which is recognitions. So I will turn this over. I'll turn this over to Mr. Richards.
Okay, at this time, if I can have Mrs. Annette Edmond come on, come on down.
Come on down.
Come on down. And I'm going to have Mr. Imke come up here as well. He didn't know that was going to happen. Part of the joy of my job is to put people on the spot every so often, so that'll be fun. And actually, Mrs. Edmond was nominated by Mr. Imke for staff member for the Crystal Apple Award. Annette Edmond has been with Tiffin City Schools as an employee since 2014. She has been an educator part-time secretary and since 2018, a full-time secretary in Tiffin Middle School. And that is a graduate of Colombian High School and Terra State Community College with an associate's degree in applied science and accredited health information technology. Besides her education, Annette brought experience from many different jobs, including deputy, including deputy clerk for Tiffin Municipal Document Imaging and Administrative Assistant for ECS Building and Consulting. Describe how the nominee demonstrates excellence in the areas of teamwork and give specific examples. Annette is a tremendous team player. She has made my transition, Mr. Imke's, to Tiffin Middle School seamless. From the start of the summer through the summer, through the start of the year, she has been able, although there was a change in leadership, the building has not skipped a beat. She has worked to inform the team of important deadlines, building happenings, and other important events to ensure all things were in order for the start of the year. Annette has gone out of her way, even beyond her working days and hours, to ensure the team has all of the important things ready to go, students and parents. She has been called upon for numerous occasions to help with basic student needs, to set up for orientations, open houses, and many other things outside her job responsibilities. Continually, she does so and ensures the office and building is running smoothly. Next, how the nominee demonstrates excellence in the area of... Annette is extremely committed to Tiffin Middle School. On a daily basis, she is continually working outside her scheduled work hours to ensure the job is done and that things are completed to meet the needs of students and parents. She does so daily and continues to maintain a positive attitude and communication with everyone she works with. She also shows commitment through her motivation. She consistently takes initiative to get things done and is proactive in her actions. The next area is leadership. Annette has demonstrated leadership through her strong work ethic and by setting a strong example for others. Many great leaders lead through example, and she does this on a daily basis. She arrives on work till the job is done and ensures that her communication with parents, students, and colleagues is always positive in nature. Through the strong work ethic and positive communication, she sets the bar high for those that work around her. Next, in taking pride in her work. Annette takes pride in her work daily. She works to ensure the quality of staff, students, and parents is top-notch. Annette is also open to new ideas and collaborating to ensure everything is in line with the philosophy of the district and building. She also works to ensure that we are clearly meeting our guidelines and policies for all aspects of her position. And finally, why does Ms. Edmond deserve this award? As in over the years, I've had the opportunity to work closely with several administrative assistants. I have never been more impressed with someone's work ethic and ability to be so kind and patient as I have seen with Annette. She is constantly being pulled in many directions: secretary duties, nurse duty, phone duty, student discipline. She wears so many different hats, and yet smiling, and responds to students and parents in a positive and polite manner. TMS is super lucky to have Annette Edmond on our team. So congratulations to Mrs. Edmond. Yeah, rose between two thorns here. Okay, and now we're going to sit there. You guys are up. Now you guys get to have a picture with her as well. Congratulations, Mrs. Edmond.
Thank you for all you do, Mrs. Edmond.
Congratulations, Mrs. Edmond. This brings us to item five. Wait, another presentation.
Thank you.
That's for me. Actually, I will be turning it over to, we convened a calendar committee. A number of administrators, a few teachers, a few teachers, a few teachers. If you look at our calendar and try to be creative, we know that we've had some issues that we've gone through regularly. And so the committee worked. I will actually give a lot of credit to everybody on the committee. In fact, I believe actually Mrs. Cole might have been a key person to say, what I believe is not necessarily what's most important. Job is to be able to look at data and look at what the majority of people do, and sometimes we all have to do some things that wouldn't be what we would personally want. But we looked at data, we surveyed people, and so Mrs. Cole was, I'm not sure whether she volunteered or was nominated. I think, I think if she wouldn't have volunteered, she nominated. So I think she may have just volunteered, or she was voluntold, one of those things in there. But Mrs. Cole is going to present the work that the calendar committee worked on. So, Mrs. Cole, you can take it.
Lee, you can hear me? Yes, good. Okay, beautiful. So, working on getting that up there, this action is also going to be shown on this feed. Again, my name is Mrs. Samantha Cole, and I am from Colombian High School. I teach Spanish there. And we're working on getting that up here in just one second. Yep, that's totally fine. Greens and all that. Alright, so here we have our proposed calendars. And so first, I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about the process that we went through with this. So the very first thing that you'll see as you go through is just the members of the calendar committee. Up, down, where do we go? Beautiful. Yes. So this is everybody that was on the committee. We had, obviously, as Mr. Richards has already mentioned, not only administration at the, you know, kind of district administrative level, but also from the high school, from, we had Laura Bryan, our Director of K-12 Curriculum, and then we had five teachers on the committee as well, on the committee as well, the whole committee here today. And the one thing that I did want to say about this is that, you know, we kind of talked about this towards the end of our last meeting in that we were all kind of, you know, proud that we put on our district tat to be able to do this, rather than doing it, you know, like thinking about ourselves and thinking about like what's best for Colombian versus what's best for Washington versus what's best for data. It was, you know, it was, you know, kind of trying to so that everybody was giving a little bit, so that everyone got the best outcome. That was the goal here. So that being said, as we continue on, we had some initial data that I wanted to share with you guys today, and that first is shown here. You can advance through this all the way to show the whole thing. And so this was originally done in TEA. We started there, and this was some of the trends that we saw just coming from teachers before we took this anywhere else. We wanted to kind of start with our, with our teaching staff, TEA staff. And looking forward to calendars, you know, what did we want to accomplish? Of course, you know, anytime that you ask people what they want, everybody wants everything, okay? Absolutely. But the pride is that people had been back to start date. This, of course, again, goes back to a facilities thing. You know, a lot of our students are in buildings without air conditioning, and people were concerned about some of the heat that they've been affected by. You know, we've heard stories of people who've had to, you know, put cloths on the back of children's necks to keep them cool, and so we wanted to move that back. That was a big priority for people. Also, the idea of a May and then providing workdays at the end of the quarters was something that was priority of TEA members. And then I only included the pie chart there to show that spring break was really 50/50, and we're going to see that as a trend throughout this. We, no matter what with spring break, we were going to have, you know, some people who weren't going to get what they wanted. So that being said, as we continue on, the process that we used was that, you know, we kind of went with anecdotal community data. We used that data, and that was our original meeting in October to create three draft calendars, and then those calendars were sent out to the stakeholders via Google Forms. And so this time, it was not just TEA membership, but also the Tiffin community at large that received those. And we received 430 overall from both TEA, but obviously you can see a large portion of people on the, of those responses, the largest portion of it was coming from the community. And so that was something that was really important to us. We wanted to obviously honor what, you know, Tiffin City School staff wanted, but we also wanted to take into consideration community in that community, and that included EMS and TCHS students as well as parents and just community members. There was no limit on who could take that, that survey. So we had 413 responses. So that being said, of the three calendars that we sent out, the first one, the first calendar plan, this one was basically the most similar to the current calendar, the current calendar that we had coming up these past three years. We just pushed it back by one week. And you can see from the data, both in our TEA survey and the community survey, and I put them back to back so you can kind of see, you know, this data is really similar, which, you know, we are blessed to have that. We don't have, you know, kind of the huge discrepancies in opinion. Everyone was kind of split on this. There was never really, there was really a huge fan of it. One of the things about that calendar that got some people was that we had, because we pushed it back, that meant you pushed back the end date, and so it ended after Memorial Day. And some people were concerned about that coming back after Memorial Day because we haven't really traditionally done that, and that was one of the concerns there. So that was our first one, and we spent first one, and we kind of said, okay, that's the first off. Two, as we can see, the Tiffin TEA teacher staff did not really particularly like that calendar. Community also didn't really like it. The highest percentage came from the end. That one had a lot of front-loaded professional development. Our intention in creating that calendar was to kind of better front-load and front-load and on staff members and having that kind of ability. But it meant that all of the professional development for teachers was being done at the beginning of the year prior to the start. And so there was a concern of what happens as we go through, you know, you need to adjust as we go through the year. You know, how do you adjust when you're not given time within the calendar to do that? And so that was one of the concerns. Then we did calendar plan three, and we can see that, you know, the data is really clear here. This was the favorite among everybody. You know, in terms of that five, six, that this was the favorite, it was the majority for TEA and very close to the majority in the community survey. And so this is the calendar that you're going to see forming the basis as we move forward, move forward. You know, what we chose to go with. So it was, it was really clear with our data that this was where we needed to go. This was what we needed to pay attention to. We saw this from both staff and community. And so then we met again in November to improve that calendar and then have a final version to propose to you tonight, to you tonight to the board. So that's just a little bit of what we did to come up with these and really trying to honor that everybody was going to have to give a little bit so that we could all get the best version for all of us and really taking that into consideration. So moving forward, we can see the proposed calendars here, and you guys have them on that flyer that Ms. Jones handed out for us. The 2024, 2025 school year with the follows, with a staff start date of August 21st and a student start date of August 27th. That is actually 10 calendar days later than it was this year, while still allowing for us to be out by Memorial Day. Spring break is shorter. You'll notice, again, kind of calling back to that thought of spring break. It's no longer a week, no longer a week long. Spring break Thursday, Friday, Monday. And then we were able to accomplish teacher workdays at the end of every quarter, as well as having our total of 185 staff days and 172 student days. Similar calendar for 24, or excuse me, for 25, 26, if you look at the next one there. It's usually the same calendar, but for the fact that we had to move it by the calendar dates of 24, or 25, 26. So obviously, you know, the dates shift slightly. Start date for the staff of August 20th instead of August 21st, for example, but it is the same calendar that we have for these two years. There's no two years. Notable difference, notable difference, two of them that are being proposed today. So moving forward, you know, things that we, the goals that we were able to accomplish in these proposed calendars, we did get the later start date and any before Memorial Day and teacher workdays after every quarter. That was, all of that was something that was really important from staff. Our spring break was kind of the midpoint of having a really short, really short spring break of only, and also having a full week. We were able to kind of shoot that in the middle. And then we also had the inclusion of flex days. And so the flex day concept was proposed by our superintendent, Mr. Richards. And the idea was to provide a district calendar that had, you know, time within the calendar that would be honoring work that teachers are doing, but personalized. So rather than every single person, every single teacher, every single staff member having to do the exact same thing at the exact same time, honoring those things that are being done at different levels. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. So this was something that was really, really popular among TEA respondents. 90% of people liked this. And so if we look at next, what those would look like within this is that we would have three of these flex days. One day providing time for completion for online training through Public School Works. Another day would be effectively counting as that final teacher workday, but rather than mandating that all staff report exactly from eight to three on the Tuesday after, on the Tuesday after Memorial Day, you would be able, whatever iteration that you would prefer to, if you wanted to do all of it, you know, on Friday and you were really cleaned up, and then you're able to come in on Tuesday for half an hour and you're good to go. Or you could stay on Tuesday until five because you just want to make sure that you have everything set and ready, all that kind of stuff. It's a little bit more, you know, thinking of what's best for, what's best for the teacher in that specific instance. And then another day would be determined by each building's, building leadership team so that we would be attending to the needs of various grade levels better. For example, elementary schools potentially having a time to work on their classrooms and set up their classrooms because they need a lot more time to set up their classrooms than we do at the high school. At the high school level, you know, the amount of to get ready for my kids to come in pales in comparison to what people need at Washington. And so that could be something that you would be using for flex. There's, you know, again, the idea of the building leadership teams would be given that ability to make that decision and, you know, serve the needs of their building at a better level. That was the, that was the concept that we, these flex days. So now, as we go into our next steps, we would need an MOU to be approved by TEA to allow for the flex days, as mentioned. And so again, kind of as we're presenting this today, that has not currently happened. And so just as a note that if it would not be approved, then we would have to add them on for staff, them on for staff days after Memorial Day, but not student report days. It would only affect staff days. And so we would be able to give this calendar to community, you know, everybody would know this is their student days, and it would just be a question of our staff and what we would have based on, you know, the flex day concept. But with a 90% of TEA responding that they would be interested in something like this, you know, it was something, you know, it was something that we were confident in. So that being said, questions?
I would start just with a comment. I really appreciate the work that's been done on this. I appreciate not only the input from the TEA, but from the community. I think that is, that is a great thing, a great thing to do. Because out of the 172 student days, compare to the number of student days this year.
I believe this year it was 175. Yes, it was 175. So we're three fewer on that. However, we did gain a day back with the, we're no longer doing, if you noticed, if you noticed the beginning of the year, the past, because of COVID, we've had split start days of A through K, L through Z, attending on different days. And so by not having the split start date anymore, you really gain a day back from that. And then also, we did remove the PD days in November, which were not part of the original count of, you know, we've been, you know, we've been having November the past two years. And that has, you know, not removed a student day, but, you know, we are no, we would be in the classroom with them on those days. And so that would be, you know, kind of a more inclusion of that. So it is, it is lesser, but it effectively two days lesser.
Thanks, Ms. Cole. Thanks, Ms. Cole. I got a question. Is the semester still being?
No, so the semester does move because of this, because we moved back. So we would have the first semester ending after Christmas break. If you see on that calendar that you have there on your flyer, the, the blue date, that's a teacher workday on January 16th. The semester would end on January 15th, and then the teacher workday at the end of that second quarter happens after we've already been back from break. That we did to balance out the quarters so that we didn't have a really short first semester and then a really long second semester.
Hours-wise, is it pretty?
Yes, I believe if I go, I have to go back into my notes, which I have here. The quarters we had were, let's see here, 42 days, 46 days, 42 days, and 42 days.
Oh, that's good.
Yes. So first quarter, 42. Yeah, second quarter, 46, 46, third, 42, and fourth. So, as even as we could make them, you know, accounting for Christmas, accounting for, you know, all of the natural, you know, calendar holidays that we have to fit around.
So you would still have six days of instruction at the high school before an exam schedule?
Yes, and that was done on purpose. Yes, we did not, we did not want to, because the way that you would kind of naturally have done it, that second quarter becomes a little bit longer because we didn't want to be back from winter break for two or three days and say, okay, we've been back for two days, exams. You know, you would have, you would have prior to exams, and we've been doing a two-day exam schedule at the high school, so you would have, yeah, you would have seven instructional days and then the two exam days.
I think that was one of the concerns when the calendar proposals came out before was even just having like exams today and tomorrow.
Yes.
As you're trying to hurry up and not be in school anymore was maybe not a great idea. I think that's both those, right?
Well, I mean, if you're, if you're talking about retention, which is...
Yeah, there's an argument for both.
Teaching retention, right?
Right.
So the whole idea is, you know, you should retain.
Exactly.
Over a break. I mean, if you're not teaching for that, then we should be, right?
And I think a lot of times people will kind of say like, oh, well, you know, like that's a natural break, natural break, it's Christmas, you know, that's happened, and that's, it's, again, we're considering all of our aspects here. And so the idea of, you know, having a later start date to honor, you know, the facilities that we have at the moment, and we want to take care of our children that we have at the moment. You know, like you said, retention is something that we are working towards, and, you know, you still have that time. You're not jumping straight into an exam. You still have time. You still have time to go, and, you know, kind of potentially assess right at the end of December and, you know, say, okay, going into these last seven instructional days, what do I know I'm going to have to hit coming back from this break? So we still have the ability to do that, and that is why that second quarter is the longest of the quarters.
I have a concern about the community survey. Was, was there, by how many of those respondents actually either had a child or were custodian of a child in the district actually using their services? I mean, I'm kind of concerned if anybody could answer it, is it limited to people in this geographic area or just? I mean, because they're not the ones having to deal with the, the schedule, and so...
I'm going to throw that over. Mr. Richards, would you mind responding to that, only because I didn't put together the community survey, so?
So when we put it out, anytime we try to gain something, there's another risk for it. So we put that out through school messenger to parents and students. I think looking at the timeliness, most of the surveys, the surveys came in fairly quickly. It's not scientific, but you can make an inference that most of those people would be students and parents. I will also tell you, in looking at the comments section of some of them, we are positive that some of them are students, based upon some of the vernacular that was used to talk about what they liked and didn't like. Actually, they were very good at articulating like. And we are assuming that some of those comments are students. We don't know that, to your point.
As a high school teacher, I will say that I know that some of them were high schoolers.
Yes. We're fairly positive. So that's one of the risks that we run is if we open it up, do we have the ability to literally fill that out? That's the downside for opening it up is we run that risk. I feel fairly decent that this would be representative of the community at large. It does kind of track with conversations that I've had anecdotally with a number of people. So it does, it does make sense. I will also say, if you, if you looked back at the original calendars, one of the things that I think people really enjoyed about the third calendar that we are presenting is very bluntly, it had the latest school start date. One of the other things that was something that was very keen to me, and I know it's something that we've discussed, we've discussed with the board, is trying to be more aligned in looking like with Sentinel Vanguard with their calendar. And so that's something I've worked with the other county schools on and with Sentinel Vanguard. And so I think there is going to be a little bit more alignment. People need to understand that Vanguard, by default, will start one week earlier, earlier than the earliest school of one of their member schools. Why? Because they need to make certain that they get students started because they need to finish a week earlier so that those same students, especially the seniors, get to come back to their home schools for graduation and commencement exercises. So the other goal of this, not that the committee was focused, was focused on, this was more mine, was trying to work with some of our friends and partners in the area to try to make it that we are not perfect. I'm not going to say if, I think our first day of school was on a Tuesday. I think there are some districts that may start on that Wednesday or that Monday, so it's never going to be, never going to be perfect, but I think the goal was closer to everybody. But I do want to say, when we say we want to align more to Sentinel Vanguard, from Sentinel's standpoint, and it's completely understandable, I completely get it, it is never going to be perfect. They're always going to start a few days, a few days before us, and they're always days before us, and that's by their design, not ours.
I think, like you said, it kind of calls back to the, everybody has to give a little bit, you know, the idea being that we didn't, what we, one of the committee's goals, I believe, was that we never wanted one group of people to feel like they were completely getting the short end of the stick. And so, and that you had to give up a little bit here or there, and same thing, you know, by opening things up, I think we had the greater benefit of hearing from community members rather than just saying, well, this is what we, as five teachers and four administrators, want. You know, that's not representative of the district, and so we wanted to get the best representation of the dissertation of the district that we could do.
I will also, patiently, and it doesn't matter to me because I have a 260 contract, I work all the time anyway, but the notion of spring break, spring break historically in Tiffin City Schools has kind of aligned around the Easter holiday traditionally, and Easter fluctuates when it is. Some of these calendars, spring break is a lot later than it typically is, and educationally, that eats into our state testing window. And having more days off at that time of year actually puts us in more of a crunch educationally. I would imagine that, and we do have some anecdotal from people in community and staff members, people like, we like starting later, we like getting out Memorial, yeah, but we, we do kind of like that full week of spring break. There was, there was some niceness with that. However, when you really drill down educationally and pedagogically, pedagogically, with the notion of taking off a full week, I know we're only talking about a few days difference, but that's at a major time of year when we are giving X number of days to accomplish a task that's given to us by the state of Ohio to accomplish. And so that kind of puts us a bit into a corner for that. So I think, so I think, better listening, better listening, particularly, that's a, that's a reason why a shorter spring break, and I know that some people really like that, that full week. I get it. But that, something had to go. I think the phrase that we said is, with a calendar, we can do anything, but we can't do everything. So some things have to go by the wayside, but I think we were, we were able to achieve, and Ms. Cole predicted, the lion's share of the major issues that a number of parents and staff had had. I also can't say, I know we were having some conversations about facility-wise, and please know, I'm not, I'm not putting down any student, any staff member, any parent. But I can't say that the first few days, a few days of Tiffin City Schools are equivalent to the first few days in some other, other districts. And that is not a testament, a slam on our students or staff, but it's really a testament to the conditions that we have on some of those first few days is not as, not as advantageous for us. So I can't say that a day is truly equal to a day. Some days are not, not all days are billed equally.
I would just say that I know families who are excited about the Easter break we had this year because, yes, I understand the testing, but this is their childhood, this is their, one of their few times that they can actually, that they can actually take trips as a family, move on out, so. And those are different experiences. I know they're not pedagogical, go to grading or stuff, but it goes to experiences.
Well, one of the, one of the other feedbacks that we had received was that some parents had said, we can't necessarily take vacations. So one of the other pieces of logic, of logic with this calendar is that in school, we take fewer days off. Is that once we start, and I will say anecdotally in most districts, this isn't unique to Tiffin, that you have a lot of parents that say, once you start the school year, we want them there until you... we, we want them there until you, until you end the school year. We, we get them during, it's not, it's a, it's a social compact that we've made with the school district, but we actually don't like all of those breaks. And, and there's nothing that stops a family from still, if they want to take off those extra days to do a, a week-long spring break trip, not to be rude, they're still gonna do that. Nothing stops those parents taking those, those trips if that's what they want. But I've had an equal number of parents that have said, we count on you guys to, during the school year, to educate them, we want them there.
And conversely, uh, high school students that are, that are working in the summer, get to work till, I, a couple of days, they get to work until Labor Day, and they can start after Memorial Day, and that's, the workforces that have summer employment, that's when they're looking for those kids. I know one organization that I'm familiar with, when, when August hits, a lot of people coming and the kids are off to college and the high school kids are back, and they really have trouble finding people to fill their positions. So I do think it helps community to have a more condensed school year and still get the same number of instruction days.
That works.
So again, this is not, this is not for a vote. With something as big as a calendar, we wanted to make certain that this was presented at a board meeting so that the community fully has its opportunity to see things. So we're gonna be sending all of this out and putting this on the website and out on Facebook tomorrow so that people in the community are aware, are aware of it. We didn't want to have data showing that pretty strongly. We didn't want to come in and say, this is it, board members, we need you to approve this. We wanted to be able to present it. If there is some blowback or other feedback in the community, let that have an opportunity to do its job. But then the plan would be to come back in January and vote on it.
Mrs. Cole, thank you for coming this evening and representing your group, and thank you to your entire group for the, the work, but also for opening up for so many different pieces of input. I think that really helps us to make a, a better decision.
Absolutely, thank you guys for your time, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Richards, do you have further, do you have further pieces?
No.
The, the only thing I will say is that tonight, there's an event going on at Noble Elementary. It's watchdogs, dads of great students, but it's actually for any male role model in a student's life at Noble. We're just starting it, we're piling it at Noble, just to see how this kind of goes. We didn't know, we didn't know what to expect. So this is the first introductory meeting, and we have a hundred and eight dads. And that, that could be grandfathers, that can be uncles, that can be big brothers, but we have a hundred and eight dads at Noble Elementary tonight, learning about this program. And the goal is, goal is to be here one day at their kid's school for the rest of the year, just to be an additional role model. We, we didn't know how many to expect, but I think it's a testament to, to our parents as well that our parents are looking for opportunities to be involved in educational lives. And I think making certain that we can provide some of those opportunities was, was really exciting.
How would a dad have found out about that, or how would someone continue to find out about that?
I do know that there was a message that went out from the school. I don't know exactly, know exactly what forum that.
There was a flyer that went.
I know there was a flyer.
A reminder in a newsletter.
There was a reminder, but I think the flyer was sent home with students. I think, I don't, I actually don't know how that went out. But I do know that a hundred and eight, we had a hundred and eight dads. And when I say dads, there are some people on the list, people on the list, there are some uncles, some uncles, um, big brothers, I think maybe even next door neighbor. So just, it's, it's a really neat program. Mr. Williams, that's a fair question, I can try to get some more specific answers as to how that was communicated out. But I will say, I do think in talking to Mrs. Tu, and Mrs. Tu, her name was far greater than, than expected. We, we were kind of hoping if we got thirty or forty parents, we were gonna feel pretty. And yet again, this is just for Noble Elementary. This is just for, uh, watchdogs for Noble Elementary. So hopefully we can grow this program to other buildings, but that's, but that's, that's an exciting event. Now, and I have a little picture that was sent to me, that gym is full at Noble.
Whose ideas?
It's a team decision.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, what, a recognized entity?
It is a national known program.
Okay, so it's something you, it's been done before.
Yes, yes.
So you're.
Some, a website if you want to see a little YouTube video about it. But it's a really neat program, I've been a part of it in some other districts as well. We are really lucky, Mrs. Miller, who we hired to be our whole child director, actually helped get this off the ground in Fremont, when she used to work at Fremont. So she's been, she's been playing an active role along with, uh, to get this launched. And I just think it's a great, it's a great story. Sometimes in education, we like to say, well, parents don't want to be involved, and that can sometimes be a misnomer. And I think what we are seeing with a hundred and eight parents wanting to come in to help with their kids and volunteer, volunteer their time, and it's a pretty strong indicator that we do have a community that does care and value education.
I do think it's important that we were clear with families that it's not just dads, that it is whatever these kids caring adult in their world is. Because our kids have a variety of situations, so I think it's great to see, it's great to see so many caring adults.
And I think that's, yet again, I, I know we just started at Noble, but I think the hope is that this would be something that we could grow to some of our other buildings as well.
That would be about almost half of the families, wouldn't it, two grades there?
Yes.
And they're about two hundred, so.
Yeah.
That's pretty.
It's a good turn.
That's a really, that is a really. To it was a little bit worried, we had to order more pizza and stuff for tonight. And she goes, I don't know where we're gonna put all these people, but we said, that's a really great problem to have, to have so many parents wanting to come and be an active member of, of their students' educational life. That's a wonderful problem to have. I will take that problem, that problem every day of the week.
That'll bring us to item six, which is the opportunity for the public to address the board. For board policy, each person addressing the board will have, give their name and address. Several people wish to speak. Everybody has three minutes until thirty minutes are taken, taken. Reading the rules, I'm gonna check to see if there are any members who would like to come forward. Seeing none. That brings us to item seven, which is the consent agenda. I'll read the headers for each of these and then entertain a motion. So seven point one is approved minutes, and that is both of the regular, regular minutes and the special, special minutes. Seven point two, approve the treasurer's report. Seven point three, approve committee reports. Seven point four, employee support staff. Seven point five, donations and grants. And again, a thank you to all of those individuals and businesses who continue to support our district and our students, our students. Six, stipends. Seven point seven, statement of purpose, budget reports. And that is the conclusion of the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? Entertain a motion? I did that backwards. Entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you.
Second, second.
Any questions? There we go. Mr. Cook.
Mr. Perez. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes, thank you. This brings us to our action items. So eight point zero one, adopt the resolution to join natural gas consortium. We'll entertain, we'll entertain a motion.
So. Second.
Mr. Richards, Mr. Cook?
Thank you. Greg DeBoer and I have been working on flipping stones to save money. One of the items we previously did, we talked about in finance committee, Mr. Williams wanted me to highlight IGS Energy, our, our electric purchasing. We're in the city's aggregation program right now, but we flipped that stone. We're gonna save just under three hundred thousand dollars over the next five years with a simple contract signature. We're looking to save about thirty percent by joining the Ohio School Council's Natural Gas Consortium. I've been in it before, it's for schools, for schools, it's designed by schools and it's. So again, we're just looking at every option we can to kind of change how we do business, how we look at things going forward, and I guess questioning the status quo, if that makes sense. How can we find ways to save money for our taxpayers?
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Dr. McBride?
Yes. Eight point two, approve OSBA membership for January to December of twenty twenty-four. Entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Not necessary.
Lovely. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Cook?
Mr. Perez? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Eight point three is approve the extension of lease agreement, lease agreement. Entertain a motion?
Still.
Thank you.
Second, second. This is just to continue to allow it to be farmed, and I do believe there was a modest increase to the rent to farm the land as well.
I believe it was two hundred and sixty dollars in change per acre previously, three hundred and eleven was the bid. This was the bid this year.
Any questions or discussion?
That was bid out.
Yeah, we had two individuals that expressed, we didn't legally have to bid it, but we had another individual call in, so we opened it up, accepted in that process through the individuals that contacted us. It's had automatic extension renewals build into the original contract back when that was initially, that was initially signed. Had it previously, did win it again, agreed to a higher amount.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Dr. McBride?
Yes. Bring this forward, we just set the organizational meeting date and time. So we'll need calendars for this, and for those viewing, our future board member who has not been sworn in yet is also here, and we'll, you'll probably hear some pieces in the background of that. We need to set the dates, the organization, the organizational needs to happen prior to.
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth. So we would be looking at the first week of January or the second week of January. Is there a preferred date, an optimal date?
January eighth, January eighth. We have superintendent's advisory committee that day, that one's been changed.
Okay.
All right.
Monday, January the eighth is a possibility.
Looks good to me.
Mr. Perez, well, Mr. Cook, does the eighth look okay on yours? I was just going down the line. You keep checking that and I'll go over here, does that work on yours?
Yes.
Mr. Richards, would that work on yours? Mrs. Sparr, would that work on yours? Mrs. Steffi? Any way to hear from Mr. Williams?
It's looking like it's not gonna matter what I say. Yeah, that'll work, that'll work.
So it looks like we have consensus around January eighth. Dr. Gase, it's weird to not ask you.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm all for it.
You're welcome to attend.
Yeah, right.
It's gonna be a five-hour meeting as well.
So we'll be looking at January with a start time of our typical start time, we want six thirty. Does that work for everybody? Looking around, I see head nods. All right, thumbs up. So then this motion would be.
Here.
Yes, please. So this would be to, to set the organizational time for January eighth at six thirty PM. Entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All right, Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride, Dr. McBride.
Yes. Eight point five, we will elect a president pro tem, and then the next one, eight point six will be a vice president, and this is just to cover the gap from, what is it? The end of this calendar year until the organizational meeting, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yep, so.
Move that Dr. McBride, McBride continues as president of, you know, Tiffin City Board.
Second, it's a great idea.
Yeah. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride? Dr. McBride?
Yes. Eight point six, elect a vice president?
I would move that Justin Williams continues in his role as vice president pro tem for the January eighth meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Kizbeth? A second?
A second, a second.
Thank you.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Having moved through all of our action items, this brings us to board discussion.
I'm gonna.
I'm gonna.
Please do.
And I know I'm not a board member, I'm fully aware of the fact that I don't serve that role. But Dr. McBride, as you indicated before, it's gonna feel a little different. You layer almost every superintendent say, who are your favorite board members? Favorite board members are the five that hire you. They are always the most, the best board for a superintendent is the board that hired you. So I say this with love and, and looked up some stuff. Dr. Andrew Gase has served on the Tiffin City Board of Education since twenty sixteen. He was instrumental in ensuring the permanent improvement fund is maintained at a robust level and is also, and is also launching the business advisory. I think we actually have a meeting still later this week, Thursday. Dr. Gase, together with his wife Anne, founded the Gase Family Literacy Fund in twenty eighteen, and partnering with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, they have provided countless books to the children of Tiffin. And last year, actually, actually, First Lady Dewine was actually up at Lincoln Elementary to recognize the Dolly Parton Library and the work that they have done on literacy as well. So we, we all have probably fun stories, but I will say, we are all extremely, and me personally, extremely grateful for the service to the entire Tiffin City Schools, fan schools family. And so with no further ado, we have a little card for you and a gift, and thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it is a little bit bittersweet. I think more sweet than bitter. But, you know, I very little bit ago, I don't think anybody goes into this job for an advancement or for popularity or for any reason other than, yeah, than the commitment that you make because it's the obligation, it's the, the giving back to, to whatever received. And along that end, I, I think I, I was thinking that I learned a heck of a lot in eight years. I mean, I've learned a lot of money, a lot of about how to manage the district and date rules and regs, and, you know, I learned a lot about, you know, how businesses, businesses are conducted. Goes on behind closed doors that, you know, sometimes we want to believe that everything's in the public, but I, but it's not, you know, everybody knows we, we make a lot of decisions in our minds outside of this meeting, but when it comes to this meeting, we, you know, have to have an open, have an open discussion. I think that's difficult to hear. I hope that I did my best, I think I did, to give back to this district. So thanks for the, appreciate the offering and, and, I can't say I'm gonna miss it, honestly. But I'm just being honest. It's one thing, it's one thing I'm, I'm, I'm pretty honest about these. I don't, I like to say something I don't believe, so. Thank you very much, appreciate it, it's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Gase.
Thank you, Dr. Gase. It'd be weird to be at this table and not have you here. I haven't had a time with that.
Been in this seat, been in this seat for like.
Even in what is a square, you were at the corner, yep. Thank you for your service and for your leadership. This brings us, are there any other pieces for board discussion?
No, but I just wanted to echo that, Dr. Gase, thank you for the time that you've served. You, you took a really big challenge, I remember when you first ran, ran, and years of success that my children have had, and your family's been involved with the district, and I think they proud of what you've done here. I think people think we've disagreed on things, I think that's because, no, it's, it's, because I think you have a lot of right ideas, and I think you've steered us in the right direction, the right direction a long time. And so I would tell people that the, the years that I've had you on the board, I can say that you truly have the best interest of our students at heart, that you want them to succeed, and I think that's something people don't understand is, you really expect them to succeed, and you expect this district to succeed and do even better because that's what you want. And so, and so, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Victor, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Victor. I appreciate that. I know, you know, we've not always agreed. In fact, quite often, not agreed. But that's okay, because as I've said before, I know I've said this before, that, that, you know, if you're foolish enough to surround yourself with people who agree with you, that's not a mark of a good leader. The person who is saying something that you never, you don't believe, you don't want, or you don't want to believe you think is important, that's the one you really got to pay attention to. Because you get into an echo chamber, and that's not good. Because echo chambers lead to almost always disaster. Because the odds that you're all right on every, every time is pretty high. Almost always wrong. If you all agree, you're almost always wrong, right? And that's just statistics. But I, I think one more thing, I will put a plug in for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library through the Gase Family Literacy Program at the Tiffin charitable foundation. Yeah, very good. And we're accepting all donations.
That's an awesome guess, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Any other?
Welcome. Thank you.
This one's my, we had the admins here earlier to recognize the quiz bowl team did succeed this. And so another good, good event for our school to be proud of.
This will now bring us to, we will enter executive session. We won't have action afterwards. So I do want to say when our next meeting is. Our next meeting will be presumably January 22nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM here. But prior to that will be the organizational, organizational meeting, the 8th. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session to consider the employment of a public employee.
So.
Yeah.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Mr. Kizbeth? Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes, thank you. This time we will move into executive session. Thank you for those who have attended this evening and have a happy holidays.